Okay, you're all set.
This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenley Town Council, and I am calling this special town council meeting to order. It is currently 6:04 PM on Tuesday, March 26. For roll call, I am actually going to do a verbal roll call since this is a virtual meeting. Ed Grandowski.
Ed Grandowski.
Hang on, go ahead. Hang on, go ahead.
Ed Grandowski is here.
Thank you. Tony Gambatista.
Present.
Andy Whitehead.
Andy Whitehead.
Michelle Murphy.
Here.
Tammy Wakefield.
Tammy Wakefield.
Here.
Patty George.
Present.
Ula Teak Barclay.
Here.
Okay, thank you everyone for roll.
You missed Kevin Kertula.
Oh, sorry, Kevin Kertula.
Here.
All right, I apologize for that, Kevin. I was going around the table in my head and I missed you, sorry. For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance except for Mr. Whitehead. At this time, we'll move on to item three on the agenda. Ms. Chloery, did we have any comments submitted for this meeting?
No comments were submitted for this meeting.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who are logged into this meeting to make public comment?
I don't see any public logged into the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So seeing how no one's logged in, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is item four, a new business presentation workshop with Sean Stewart from Revised Government Websites. Now Sean or Mary, I don't know which one of you two want to start this, but feel free to go ahead.
I'll start really briefly, so as you all are aware, the town has engaged with Revised for really recreating, reimagining our website, so we're going to be working through that transition. We've done hard paper and Survey Monkey surveys to try and get some feedback on that. And I know the council has been very interested in, this has been one of the goals for the town council, to improve communication. So wanted to take this opportunity for, you know, Revised, Sean's going to be one of our main people on this, to be able to kind of hear directly from you as council members and users of the website, what your, you know, priorities are, he's going to show you, you know, kind of some of the looks and feels. We have not developed anything yet, so you are not going to see any Town of Killenley website because this is, we are in the very ground, you know, ground stages of development and determining what any of that really looks like. So know that no decisions have been made around anything. We're really looking for that initial basis of feedback to be able to start working that in for that initial development. And I'll turn it over to Sean.
Okay, sure, yeah, so Sean, I work with Revised, so I've been working with Mary and looking into the site as far as all the aspects that we need to do for the redesign and what the individual departments and everything would want as far as the updates to the page be concerned. So I'll share my screen with you here so we can kind of just go over all the basic aspects for this. And as far as for people who aren't aware of who Revised is, just as a company, we are a municipal website provider. So we work with thousands of clients, we actually work with a lot of people in Connecticut for their site, and we're a content management system that's specifically designed for municipal website design. So obviously, there are a few that I pulled up so that way you can take a look as far as the people that are close by and you can get in contact with them as far as the whole process for the support structure and the development of the site. But for, you know, what we do with the pages and what we are planning to do with the site here would be to do a custom design. So the site would be exactly how you wanted it to be laid out and how you wanted to have things flow and all the portions and functional aspects to it would just be additions on to what you want to have be displayed for the page. So the most pertinent aspects of those things would be making sure that ADA compliance would be set up with the site from the beginning. So are we all familiar with the ADA compliance mandates for what websites are, that type of thing?
No.
Or if you haven't, obviously, it's mostly just for things like if you needed to change contrast in the page for red-green colored blindness or being able to keyboard navigate if you couldn't use a mouse. These all have to be designed from the start with the site and make sure that it's all accommodated too. And then making sure the site's going to be mobile responsive because that's how people will be visiting the site. That's much more common now than it used to be for the desktops. But search engine optimization and all those portions would just be built in as part of how we would do the design. And for the actual administration for the page, you'd be able to do kind of like what you are now with the current site. You could have individual administrators and content editors be able to work with their portions of the pages. They would be able to set up for permissions so that no one would be able to work in areas that they shouldn't or be able to create workflows or be able to save drafts before being able to post. All that would be available to you. And we handle all the hosting and redundancy, so all the basic elements for what you need for a government site. And we would make sure to host it redundantly for you as well. And you're going to have an entire team that's actually dedicated to the site for the design portions, for the support after the fact. So and everything that is actually on the pages and what you'd see, they're designed by Revised. So the CMS isn't put together with different types of things that were brought up from different companies or anything like that. So that would just be something that will be built in when we're starting the page. So as far as like the current site, which was built on an old Civic Plus template, so this will be a very different experience for what it is that you have currently. So like when you take a look into Marlboro, Connecticut and how they have their site laid out for individual portions or if you have Stafford, Connecticut, so you can actually go through any of our sites and see that they can be completely different from one another. So the different focuses and different ideas that they wanted to put forward, that's what we do with the pages. But also making sure to maintain that if you needed to have like social media sharing, this is already included or being able to do translations, those are all going to be just standard elements to any type of site that we do. But any questions about that as far as like just the design portions or who we are?
I would definitely like to see, or you can email it to Mary, a list of other towns that use your company for their websites so we can take time to look over those and see how they're set up.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So yeah, all the sites like here that we're looking into, so I was just working with Marlboro not too long ago so they'd be able to walk you through those or, you know, New Canaan, that this is also another site that they have their design and aspects. So absolutely, I can send you over a list of just all sorts of people that we're working with, so sure. But just in general, as far as like the site is concerned for like what you wanted to do and create, that it can be very different from what you have now, you know, setting up for individual like drone videos or having pictures that you can change on the back end. So the flexibility with what it is that you'd be able to build is much higher than what it is currently. So things like making sure that if you have, you know, sections for about pages, that you'll be able to actually draw attention to things that people don't normally go to on the sites because they're just not built to kind of accommodate to that type of look. So things like this, so if you create a page like this is New Brunswick, New Jersey, where they have their about section where they actually created customized icons and pictures with questions so that way people will be more engaged to just learn about the city, that type of thing. So and that's all going to be built in as part of how you want to do the design. And we'll make sure things like the calendar like this here, that you'll be updated for all of this. So as far as, you know, being able to separate out for individual types here, that you'll be able to say like San Carlos, California, this site, the calendars will be able to list for individual department sections or like if you have particular events where you will be able to post in pictures or add in mapping, it's automatic. So it'll be very helpful for the departments to kind of throw in whatever they needed to with the pages. And if this is built in. Oh, yes, go ahead.
For that calendar, we can, we basically are color coding them by topic, right? When we go over back to that California one.
This one here?
Nope, the California one that you were just talking about, yours. They're color coded, so like we could have the town council meetings one color, we could have boards and commissions another color, we could have parks and recreation events and library events different, so we can do that, we can customize all those.
Yep, absolutely. So actually, you could see that here, so right now, as far as the city does it, they have their events in this blue, they have the parks and recreation and their particular registrations in yellow, their meetings, and you could obviously just stratify for what it is that you actually wanted to see and be able to show all or even search for particular events. But yes, absolutely, you can do that, and that's built in. So it'll be much easier to be able to kind of pull out where things are, who is actually going to be, you know, addressing them than the calendar is currently, so that'll be part of the design. Saying, oh, sorry, was there a question?
In addition with the calendars, is there some kind of an index with that calendar? That, I'm not, I'm not the best website guy, scroll, you know.
So what do you think, what do you mean by index, what do you think would be helpful, like?
Well, just a listing. I have a hard time when I'm, I don't know what to ask.
I think one of the benefits of this, like our calendar, I think, is very hard to read because it's got so much stuff on it, you don't know whether you're looking at a board and commission meeting or whether you're looking at a recreation event, right? What I like about this website is that by color coding it and having what those color codes mean at the very top, you know, that's kind of like your index, right? Like the color meetings is already in purple, right, or pink, right, whatever that color is, right? We can choose what those colors are, and then when they're looking at the screen, if they're looking for a border commission meeting or they're looking for a town council meeting, they know what color they're looking for, or they can click on that and then it'll scroll down and it'll hide everything else but just that color, right?
Okay, maybe that.
So I think that that is really helpful because then it really makes it easier to navigate. Like their city events are in blue and their parks and rec ones are in yellow, right? Like we can have library in green, right? So if somebody's trying to find a library event, they would look at all the green ones, right? I think we just have to identify what are, what are color coding in, like that kind of is your index at the top.
Okay, all right, well, I mean, I saw three, I think we've got to have more and something.
Yeah, yeah.
Colors, but okay, all right, maybe.
I have, I have a large array of colors we can use.
Sure, yep.
So I have one question, um, pardon, to interrupt. So say click the meetings, when you click on that and it brings everything up because we have so many different commissions, will that also be color coded once you get in there? Or will there be a specific list of each commission? Can you dial it down past that, just that index at the top?
Yeah, oh, so like what you're actually creating, like the individual calendars for, so like you would actually be able to do it by the commission so they could be a different color if you wanted to, that's absolutely fine, yeah.
So instead of having a bunch across, so what I meant was like if you click on the meeting and then you're, you're one more layer in, would that be broken down?
No.
How it's voted for the commissions too?
That would be all across the top. Right.
So I think Mary had made a, answered the question there for what you needed, but did that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, sure, and also to answer the other question, you can actually just have them put as a list like this. So like that's just an option that you could just be displaying like this or like say on the front page when you actually have all the different calendars, you can actually, like what they do, you could actually put focuses on different, like the major ones, so like here where they have their city events, you could see like the next upcoming events, but like if you did a different tab, it actually pulls up the next coming events for the parks and rec. So this is just basically just how you wanted it to be displayed out.
Okay, yeah, so that's what I meant, so it dials down beyond the index. So when you click on it, you could get very specific for each event or meeting or whatever.
Yeah, so yes, and when you're like listed in here, like what's actually put onto this and you wanted to actually put out for like what a particular meeting is, like you could even upload like here so they actually have a list over to the registration for their camp registrations. But like if you have a commissioner meeting or you have something that's specific and you needed the agendas put right onto the calendar, you could do that if you wanted to, sure.
Oh, excellent, thank you.
Sure, yeah, and in a similar vein, the staff directory will also be something that we would update. So like making sure that people would be able to find individual like members or staff on different pages. So currently, it was separated out as like particular departments where they have listings, something like this, but being able to actually create some sort of like centralized version or like even individual to the department so that people could actually jump in and they'd be able to keyword search for it. So like here, so this is Richfield, Minnesota, where if I was looking for an individual, like say Amy, I can pull Amy out of the services and be able to collapse down rather than having to just like search through and find it within different pages. So this will just be something that we include and we'll make sure to migrate any contacts into something like that with you and show you how to add those later on too, so in case people change or anything like that. And then also same thing for being able to not lose any of the functionalities that you have. So I know a lot of the individual listings for the contacts, they have something like this where if you needed to create a web form for a contact page, so you don't put their emails out, that that's something that's built in into the site as well, so that you can create things like this on any page for any reason. So a lot of times that is something where they use it for an individual contact, but you can also stratify out by department so that it doesn't even have to put out an individual name. It will just forward over to who you needed to, things like that, so. And that's just, that's just the functionality of how the website works. So it's nothing special to be able to do something like this and you can do it on any page. And as far as like the additional segments to like what we're going to be adding to address for certain particular issues that we were looking into would be things like including functionality for business directories, things that like, so here where it was going to be something that was going to be developed out for any of the municipal listings or anybody who wanted to kind of have their business listed up onto the site to have something like Largo, Florida, so like this site right here, where you would have a municipal facility directory. So, you know, say if you wanted to look for a park, that you would be able to type in the parks and they would all be able to list out for you and you could jump in, get the mapping for where it is. They can include, you know, little blurbs about themselves or like they have a virtual tour, you don't have to probably go this far, but it's something that you could do and the contact information. So people like to have something like this so that they can kind of see all the municipal aspects that you want to kind of showcase. So and it doesn't have to necessarily be tied to the government at all, it could just be tied to, or you could create things like events where you have like things that happen every year or a particular parade and you like to show the information so that people can kind of plan ahead for things like that. Yeah, that's definitely something that happens actually here. So like if you have the community events or you have individual business listings, that you'd be able to create out full categorizations that you wanted to, so. And then being able to make a little bit more simplification for the site for things like how you're going to be able to find it fast in this section, which would just create links to different pages. You can actually ask questions if you don't know where to go. So you can be able to create FAQs for like what you do with any of these particular aspects. So if I had a question actually about the dog licensing like this, but I didn't know if I need to go to Parks and Rec or I need to go to police, if I put in dog, they would be able to actually go to a question and answer, go directly to where it is you're going to need to go. People like to have it like this rather than set up in a way that, you know, they have to make sure that you create something where it jumps to different pages to actually give you the answer. If you lose people when you do things in that way, so they will just call you when they do that. They're going to call you anyway, but this is just something that will be easier for you, but. And we'll make sure, actually in the same vein, we'll make sure that the minutes and the agendas were going to be migrated into the new site into different individual department listings and document centers so that way you can actually do that. So here, where you have the agendas and minutes for different commissions and the different years, that you'd be able to stratify out directly onto a centralized page and keyword search for those types of things. So if I was looking for say a permit, or actually here, not in this one, where you actually have documents, permit, you'd be able to pull the permits out. Or on this one, if you had a particular date that you were looking for in 2018, that say you would be able to keyword search for the date and it would pull it out. So this will be just again, the standard function that's going to be built in into the site. And this, they things as well, we'll be able to replace the RFP listings and instead of having them be like links to the PDF documents here, that you'll actually have a dedicated application so that can show the closing dates or you could put out the information here or, you know, being able to list out things for employment applications and like individual openings that you wanted to kind of showcase that people will be able to keyword search for those, pull up the information for what the job listing is, that type of thing. So this is something that will also be included into the site. So any questions so far, sorry, I know I went through a bunch of different things all at once, but any questions about anything?
I just, I got a question, as far as the agendas and the minutes from the meeting. You talked about searching, so let's say someone want, there was a, something that came up during a council meeting and a member of the public wanted to search for a certain topic, they would actually be able to do that?
So there is an optional thing that was included onto the proposal, I don't know if you've seen that, where that is something that you can do, so that would be something where you're looking to a, within a document search. So actually, a really good example is New Canaan, they do that. So where you actually have a particular listing or a segment, so here, I'll see if I can pull it up for you so you can see what it'll look like. So when I had a particular border council meeting and I had a finance meeting with the minutes here, that was this year on the March 5th, so you can actually see what the minutes were, but you had a particular thing that was actually discussed as far as like the middle school that you wanted to look up. You'd actually be able to take a term like that before you found this document, you could search it in an exact phrase search. You can actually look within the documents to find like a topic that was actually discussed. So this is something where it's kind of a more advanced version of that type of submission. So it, but it's optional, not everybody wants to do something like this, but it would be something that we could actually include into the design if that was something that was important for you, for sure. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that would be great. And it would also be a useful tool for council members as well, like if we want to search back to a topic that came up before and we can't, couldn't remember exactly what meeting it was, but we knew it was a few years ago. But if we could search that topic and then we could go back in and look at the minutes from that meeting and I think it would be a great tool for the public as well as a council.
Yes, yeah, this one is definitely one of the, and as far as like the actual website design and development, this is the only one that's not directly developed by revised for exactly what you're describing. So they did, they had a particular use case scenario of like they needed to have documentation where sometimes it would be like handwritten and it was from like 1920, that they would be able to actually put it into a system like this and you can actually have a different type of package that would be able to use algorithms to be able to pull out like handwriting so that it would see what it's actually writing. You probably don't need that, but like that's what this is useful for. So like what you're describing where a council member can't remember when something was brought up, but be able to find it, for sure. Any other questions about this, what this is?
Well, I'm not that familiar with, is there a cross, like if you cross referencing different things, that's, that's what, like we say, when you pull up a topic, but maybe you have to start with council issues and then underneath that, from what Jason was talking about at a previous meeting, where you couldn't have just in general, a meeting that was just in general in 2020. He said, well, I want a meeting in 2020 for this topic. It wouldn't have to be more tied to a board event or council, or is it just the topic itself?
Oh, no, so it would be literally within the actual like agenda or the minutes that like if something was discussed or you could search within a particular like board meeting or like a, like a task force or committee and then be able to say, search for within a date range or, you know, something of that nature or like you're looking for the actual document title, so there's more advanced searches that are included in that. Is this what you meant? Is that what you mean this here?
Yeah, I, I think what he's looking for is like, if you put in the topic, will it pull up any agenda or minutes that it shows up in?
Oh, yeah, so that'd be more like of a general situation. So say if I was looking for like any words that were included that have that topic, it would pull it from different like boards or decisions that were describing that particular thing or that has it in contained within it. Is that the answer to the question?
I'd like to agree with you. This thing talking. I'd like to agree with that. That I like this.
I think that you might have cut out right halfway through, I think that.
Right halfway through, I think.
Somebody, I think, has their microphone on, it might be cutting the voices.
Might be cutting the voice.
Jason's idea with the search, I am in favor.
Oh, okay, so I think that what she said was that she's in favor of the type of search like this, that, okay.
I got it, thank you, Michelle.
Okay, so as far as this is concerned, obviously, this is something that we could add into it if you wanted to utilize that and actually move the documentation into this particular system. So this would actually just be something that would be on top of something like this. So, you know, the document centers like this is just a part of how the content management system runs. So you can actually utilize this for all sorts of different reasons. So actually, as an example, like San Carlos, California, they don't just use this for agendas and minutes or anything like that. They, they use it for different types of communication, so like they have their, like their newsletter listings and they put those within something like a document center so that way, you know, because they create it with a different system, but they want it to be available to download on the site that you could utilize it for this. So you don't have to have it be as stringent for every type of documentation, but obviously you can if you want to. Or this where it's just easily accessible right from the site for something, you know, easy to use. So it's just a built-in function for this. But, yes, so and any other questions about like the particular aspects that are going to be included with the design or just in general, just anything that you were looking for for a particular department?
I just had a question on the, our financial data for the town was also going to be incorporated into this website.
Sure, you mean like, like budget documents or anything of that nature?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, anything that would be included as like the documentation that exists currently on the page would be something that's included into the movement for the site. So we would actually work with you for the site mapping for where are things going to go and then we will actually, we have a team that does a migration for all the material that will exist on the site and move it into where you need it to go.
To follow up with that, Ula, with regards to the transparency software, that's a separate software, there would be a link to that to show those uploads of ongoing transactions, not just the budget and the audit documentation that we're working with ClearGov. And so that'll have a link onto the website, so we'll have a location for that, so people will be able to access that software.
Okay, that was, that was actually my question, how it was going to be incorporated with the ClearGov software. Okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah, that would just be something where it's directly linkeded or onto the page. So like say on a site like this where you actually would even be able to say, you know, click here for the ClearGov information or something of that nature, that's just going to be built in as part of the design. So you can have it right up front and center, something like that. Sure, okay, so any other questions about that or like any of the other departmental like postings that they need? Doesn't sound like it.
You know, Sean, can you go through like some of like, you know, we've seen a lot of different kind of front landing page designs. It would be interesting from, from my perspective and I think from the design team perspective, if there were, you know, if the council could give some feedback on, you know, what styles of, you know, front landing pages, like there's this landing type page and then there was a couple other ones for kind of homepages. What do, what do you guys foresee Killenley's, you know, kind of initial entry design kind of look like? I don't know, you can flip through a couple of different ones.
So basically, what we do when we're actually going through that initial process would be that we actually go through like basic frameworks for how you want the site to maybe be laid out, something that could be, say, more modern or could be more contemporary or like have a particular design function, but that's actually based on what you wanted to have laid out. So like here, when we see you have like the side links where you wanted to have like the news and events be put into this particular location is obviously very different than say what San Carlos wanted to do with their site. So like they actually have, you know, the quick links on here on this, this front portion. So like that type of thing is actually completely dependent on how you wanted to have your site listed out. So it makes it very easy to kind of pick whatever you want to do with the page. But I can actually show you somebody who was actually going through, say, the design process and how they were creating the site and like the type of things that you would be able to change for that. So what we're looking at right here would be, you have an entire support portal that's dedicated to your site. So I'll show you somebody who was actually designing theirs and they went through a couple of different iterations with the page. So this is Sibolo, Texas. So they wanted to do their site where they have the particular Buffalo as their logo and they had an idea about how they wanted to kind of present in style. And during the initial kickoff meetings, the team and the designers went through with them as far as like the basic wireframe structures for how they wanted to create the concept. So here, I'll show you kind of what that looked like here. So during those kickoffs, we did that, but the design concept would be that first stage of like, we kind of get your feedback of things that you like from other sites or like, you know, how things are laid out and we can create something like this. So when they wanted to build out their page, they did like to have the side navigations, but this is a concept. So like you could see they have like the stars and everything on the sides, but they actually eventually ended up doing Buffalo tracks, so it's very granular for how you want to do your layout. So for us, for me to be able to say, well, I could see this as being a particular template build, actually, a template would make it limited. Actually, a template would make it limited. You are not limited for what you want to do. You could kind of do whatever you want. So and and in the end, what they actually went with was this. So I could actually show you that their site currently. So instead of doing like the pictures and what they did there, they went with the the a video in the background, which is something that you could change out and do whatever. But like I said, the Buffalo tracks and they have the hover elements here. So like they wanted a big contrast between this. So when you're seeing these things, you know that you can click on it, which was important for older residents. Because they needed to be able to see if I'm on something that I can actually click to it. You know, or like here, they had the calendar here. It actually used to be along the bottom of the the sites here. But they wanted it to be more present so that people would see that more quickly without having to scroll. So like I said, that's entirely how you wanted to kind of design and develop the page, that it would be something that we could do with you for sure.
I really like on this page, the kind of those side tabs that have the names on them versus just a little picture. I think people get confused with what a picture might mean. And you're right for the older, for the, you know, for not just our senior residents, but even, you know, some of our other residents. They just, sometimes it's hard to know whether or not you can click on something. So being have being able to have that direct contrast, I think is helpful.
Yes, or there's things like where they like to have individual sections of the site kind of be able to guide them into different areas. So like this is Pasco County, Florida. So like interior within their different departmental, like their top navigations like this. They actually created a tile template design. So it's like very much like they could they could create pictures that will be able to guide people and just kind of give them a general idea for what it is that they wanted to do. So some people just really like to see pictures over words. And that's just the idea that they have for the site going forwards. Others, they want to have it just be more structured informational. They don't want to necessarily have too many distracting elements because that's something where they think that an older resident might not be able to handle something like that. So like I said, it's it's very granular for what you want to build for sure. And any questions about that, like like the actual framework? So like, actually, you can. Like the actual framework. So like, actually, I think somebody has a question. Go ahead. I think somebody has a question. Go ahead.
I want some tree.
Want some I the end of that cut out. Want some I.
Trees.
Trees. As far as the like the designs and yeah, sure. Or you mean like this, like actual like like site mapping trees?
No, we'll put, well, she wants to see like some of our parks and some of our spaces and and some of our woods that we have, some of our. And I think that maybe that would be really great, like even like, you know, thinking like a video of like Ha- Hollow Park. And, you know, even like, you know, some of our other walking trails, giving doing some of those as some of these video backdrops. I think that's a really great option to really, you know. You know. Highlight, yeah, highlight our town and highlight some of those, you know, great features.
Sure. And actually, so that you get an idea kind of like what the first steps are when we're creating the site. So we actually sent out a questionnaire, and I think this was actually something that was kind of built out for like the the survey that you wanted to kind of send to the residents for what they wanted. But like for for you, and it would be actually more specific for like actual things that you like about different pages. Or like when you talk about that there are certain functionalities or pictures of things you want to actually showcase. That's kind of what this is. So like the layout and frameworks like this. So maybe this would be kind of the basic structures for what we were discussing previously. So you can actually see like different versions of that. So if you have no idea what you want to do at all, it can bring you to this or sort of like idea of let's kind of build it like this. And then maybe change it completely afterwards. But that way you know kind of what you wanted to see for sure. So yeah, we could do lots of trees. We can do that as like kind of the whole design. So whatever you wanted to do for sure. But yeah, so any and any questions about this? Obviously, this would be part of the design, like the committee and how they're going to be building out the site. But like this is just the basic elements for when we before we even have our kickoff meeting. So we actually asked for like ten high definition photos of things that you really wanted to showcase out. So that we can actually feature it on the concepts for you for that exact reason, like Rashad wanted the trees. So, yeah. Doesn't sound like any other questions there, but.
I think you're. We're good with that.
All right. Well, great. So, you know, obviously, if you if you have any other questions that kind of come up later on. And, you know, we could kind of go through more specific elements with particular departments. Was there anything that you needed that you wanted to kind of bring up during a meeting like this?
Um, so the other, the other component that we were looking at that, you know, and I think you touched on it with the citizens comment or citizens input page. Um, you know, we currently have a separate program that we utilize a C Click Fix. Where people can report to us issues throughout town and stuff like that. And I think your platform already kind of has that built into it. So we were looking at being able to kind of consolidate that. So could you like show where that might be or how that would function on the on your platform?
Sure. So this right here, like this is the C Click Fix that you guys are utilizing. So we have an application. So currently, as the the proposal is concerned, it's just an optional. It wasn't built in directly. So we can add it if you want to. But when you actually have it built in and structured into the site, that it would look something like this. So we call it the Public Service Request System. So, you know, C Click Fix was actually a company that Civic Plus bought to utilize that particular framework. But we actually designed it and it does all the same functionality. So like you'd be able to sign in directly from the site or be able to pull it up on your phone and report the issues. And you could actually do sign ins or continue as guests. And you could see where the issues are actually outlined and if they are pictures and things like that. So this system would work a lot like that if you wanted to kind of coalesce the systems into one developer and and framework. So yes, that that's what we could do here for sure. And people you said.
Not many. Like.
Yours, but some will.
We so C Click Fix actually gets used more internally. Um, externally, we only have probably about, you know, a handful of users that use it on an external basis. But we, you know, so we haven't had a huge amount of utilization of it. I think it being more integrated into the website as opposed to the feeling of I'm going to a different website somewhere else. I don't know if I'm really reporting to Killingley. I think that's kind of been the feedback that we've gotten with the C Click Fix. Um, C Click Fix has been very expensive for the little amount of utilization that it has. Um, and, you know, just having this fully integrated in it, you know, you're still on the Killingley's webpage, right? So it feels more like you're actually reporting it to the town versus on some other random platform that requires you to log in and make all of, you know, it it's it just seems a bit more cumbersome.
So, yeah, right here, that's we're actually.
The emails come to different departments depending on what the person. Right, which is the same that this would do. So if it's like a pothole, it goes to highway. If it's tough, it's like that goes to different departments.
So it looks like Tony had a question was raising his hand.
Uh, yes. So a couple of things, a lot of websites I use in my job, I I do love the tiles. I feel like the tiles are visual and they're very, very easy to understand what you're going to click into with tiles. I'm a huge fan of those. You know, many of the sites I use are tile driven and they're very easy to navigate. The second is when we choose images, do the well, the images like Michelle, I loved her idea. I mean, you got to show, you know, the rural nature of the town along probably with historic buildings. Does it ha- does your front page, is it just one or can you roll the images through? So you're seeing them as you're on on the front page?
Oh, no, you could definitely have it where it's a scrolling page. So like here, we're actually marble. Let's see, you can see these are. You could scroll through different pictures and you would be able to control those, that type of aspect. And and that would be something that you could do if that's this is what you mean.
Yeah, yeah, I like that. All right, that was it.
Yeah, no problem. Sure. And you could change those at any time, changing the orders and it would be immediately.
We can kind of condense all those as we start to move through implementation and design. Um, Sean, when we get a like a prototype design, is that something that I'll be able to send the council a link on? So they can kind of take a look at it and give us some feedback before we get all the way through a hundred percent design. And we're getting ready to go live and they look at us and tell us we did a terrible job.
Yes, definitely. You would be able to do that so that the whole the whole design process is built around. So like when we do design concepts and revisions and changes that you would actually be able to go directly into, say, like a design portal like this. So you could actually send them the whole portal link to be able to go directly to this. So you could actually see the Sibolo where they have different revisions and sections for when they change certain things or different interior pages or how they did a department page. So, yep, absolutely, you will be able to do that.
That's fantastic.
So that design questionnaire you pulled up, Sean, are we going to be able to get access to that? So as we go through the links of all the different websites you show us, we can kind of take notes. And then when we send that to Mary, because I noticed on there, I was reading when you had it up, it said like your top five websites or webpages.
Sure. Oh, yeah. This right here.
Yeah, it'll keep it more streamlined for Mary if we each send her one of those with our ideas and then kind of incorporate that to all the other, you know, surveys and things.
Well, really what this is is actually, so it's an electronic form. So like this will be sent to us when we do the initial design process. But like if you actually say, print out this form and people would be able to add in all individual. Sure, that they they could do that. So you can kind of compile a list of all sorts of different things that you like. And then during the actual kickoff meeting and that process that that we were looking into there, that we could actually go over and kind of incorporate those things into how we're going to do the layouts. So all that is addressed during that kickoff meeting before we even start that first concept.
So maybe, so this, this is going to replace any website of the boards and commissions? Are they going to have theirs and how?
No, all of that will roll up to here.
Okay.
Because currently, all those boards and commissions are part of.
I know.
They're all part of this. There's a couple, sorry, so they're still out there that we need to have them rejoin the crowd. But that'll this will essentially get everybody rejoining the crowd. As it should, because we need to make sure that all the websites are eighty are compliant with all of the requirements, ADA compliant, which this revises fully compliant and they maintain that compliance. So as, you know, things change, they update that. So we know that.
One umbrella.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. So and and if there are different like actual separate websites that are satellites. So a lot of times there's like a, say, a library or a police department or something of that nature that's its own separate entity. We can actually even do things where we create customized landing pages for them. So it's like a one time design fee. So like internal within a site, you can create out something, say, like this where it's built out. So this would be internal to UVA City, California. They have their own website design. But like the police department, they actually wanted to have like an internal landing page that has their own kind of focus and elements. So or like here's an example. So like this is Halsey, Oregon. So their library is internally built within their main city site. So this is something that you can add for a particular department if they wanted to have kind of a more fleshed out sort of situation. Or you can have things where you have things like microsite. So like if they wanted to maintain a separate identity and they wanted to get a different website page, but say even have a similar design. So like this is Temple Parks, their parks and rec department. This is Temple, Texas, their city site. So like you can do things like this. You know, there's lots of different options for that type of aspect. And that I think those were actually included as part of the design elements that we could do for individual pages. But obviously, coalescing them onto one type of like site where here we have all the boards administrations of the police department and they're all within the same umbrella. It makes it easier. So a lot of times doing things like this where it's internal, there could be a high administrator that can help the police when they need to have something be posted. Because there would be somebody who's actually developing the site for everybody else, too. So that that could be helpful for them, especially the police, because they usually don't have somebody on staff that does this. So a lot of the times their sites will kind of stagnate. So they like to have something on on like their main city page that that will be able to they can point to people with. Is that the question? Like kind of something like this or just in general, just like all of these here?
No, I think that that answered it fine. That's.
Sure.
That I think was good.
Great.
You had a question?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so it's I've seen Grizzle scroll through here a couple of times. What I think is interesting about them is they're one of the few towns in Connecticut that also has a borough. As being living in the borough section of Killingley for the Borough Danielson, they're actually currently working on their own website. Would that be something that if we had a link on the town site that somebody could hop over from Killingley to the to the borough site?
Absolutely. Yeah. So like that, that's whenever you're creating a quick link or something like this, that they would just go directly to another page. That that's easy to do and easy to incorporate. So you'd be able to add something like that in. So like, say, what we're looking at to the pages like, let's see, here we go. This one has lots of icons. So like if you add particular government sections and like you have different icons, it's like here's, you know, click here for the 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 borough website. You could do that. Absolutely.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, that's all part of the design and and now you have that and where you wanted things to be laid out and how you wanted to add it in. Any other questions?
I like the videos.
Yeah, that that's one of those things that's actually becoming more popular now is to do the drones. Because like somebody has a brother who has a drone in the government somewhere. So I think that I was just working with somebody who the mayor was actually kind of a drone aficionado, but had no reason to own it until this happened. So he was, he was very happy. Yeah, he's like, oh, I get to use it. So that was pretty funny.
Yeah, because you can incorporate the videos and the pictures throughout the whole website. And with the different seasons and different events coming up, you can actually get short videos, almost like shorts, like TikTok. Or I don't use that, but Instagram shorts. And you can keep it really, really current.
Yes.
And get more people to come to the website and get information. Very difficult to get people to look at the information. I think this is much more attractive and it would draw a lot more people.
Yeah, that that is the idea. And a lot of people, they'll actually embed like YouTube videos or something directly in on pages because of that. Because they wanted to make sure that people can see, hey, I have this thing happening. Like here's a live video of it. They actually do a live video feed of like a parade. I've seen that before. Yeah, for sure. Yeah. So any other questions?
Nice. Very nice.
Any other particular issues or any other like design aspects, like if you wanted to incorporate those? Because that way, once we know that, that we could even kind of start from that point when we begin the process and know that the department talked about this. So we'll make sure to incorporate it. Anything like that?
I like the comments. Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Patty.
I was just going to say, I like the tiles. I like the on the calendar, the list up top. And then where you can dial down into certain events. I like that it includes the community events because some people, you know, you go on Facebook and you're looking for different things. And if we have a one stop shop, so to speak, for everything going on in Killingley in the area. I think we'll get a lot more activity across the board for people becoming engaged. Because we're constantly trying to get people to engage with us and ask questions and come to meetings. And I think that's a really important part is when you go to the Killingley website right now, it's very frustrating, even for me to try and find things or dial down to look for this information. You know, so this is, it took me a while to get used to the website. As there are a lot more people. But yeah, this this is going to be wonderful for everyone. Great job.
And actually, as far as like that that type of search patterns and being able to find things easily, that's a lot of time why people aren't like that they they don't join in. Because it's just hard to see or they don't know where to look or they do things like that. So even be even able to create things like curated searches like this. So like you can go to sections pertaining to certain areas. This could create categorizations. This is helpful. Just just very simple touches that'll do things that will make. This could create categorizations. This is helpful. Just just very simple touches that'll do things that will make it easier to drive people to where you want them to go. Then they'll go. You know, if they have to do it themselves, they're not going to. They don't, they don't. And and this right here, what I was showing is actually, so this is optional, you can do a curated search like that. A lot of people do like that. So because basically in the event where I say if I was looking for a permit, where basically you can, it's already included to have a search like this. Where it's going to say anything that's pertaining or anything that says permit on the site. But, you know, that's five hundred and ninety-six results, which isn't super helpful for anybody, which would be the same if I did it here. So like, it's just basically anything that's going to say permanent and you have tons of pages now. So this is helpful because, you know, they don't know what permit to look for. You can kind of narrow it down. So you can say, hey, are you looking for a building or are you looking for parking or paying them? That type of thing. So a lot of people like that.
Nice. This is exciting. Jerry, when's the last time the website was updated?
Um, we updated the website in twenty sixteen, maybe? No, probably tw- yeah, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. It was right before I went up to Putnam in twenty seventeen. Um, so it was right around twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
Yep, so we're definitely due for a big change.
Yeah.
Sure. And as far as like with the Civic Plus platform and like this template and anything like that, even if you did do the updates for them, like with the calendars and things. That there, they still look like this. The their calendars didn't change. One, because they didn't actually develop most of the things they're utilizing. So.
That was.
Sorry, was there a question?
No, it's okay. So uh some of the members here have to go out to go to other meetings and we're just saying, uh, they appreciate being able to see. Um, kind of what those formats are.
It, I I obviously I don't want to keep everybody too long because I know that some people are at home and everything too. So it's, you know, if you need anything else or any other questions, but other than that, we can kind of add anything you need to for the proposal and go from there.
Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Ready? Great. So yeah, other than that, I will be able to touch base with Mary and then, you know, uh, let her know if there's anything that comes up after the meeting. And uh we'll go from there. All right, great. Thanks so much. So I will talk to you soon.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Would anything, anyone like to make any more comments, questions?
So I sent Heidi Clifford a a text message after about about talking to him about the Grizzle site. They're actually in the middle of pr- of creating their own uh website updates. Um, so. It it sounds like all we have, we'd have to do is give hit, get, put the hyperlink in then.
Yeah, from from the borough, all we would get is the link.
Okay.
So we would just have, that's easy, that's an easy thing to grab, is just the link.
Yeah, so I mean, I I mean, I think it would be really cool seeing we're both updating at the same time. That, you know, we kind of, it'd be nice if we could almost, I mean, I really like the way Grizzle did that in the in the Borough Jewett City. So. Seeing we're one of the the few towns, both both of us have, what, there's only four burrows is there? Think in the state. Anyways, it's it's pretty cool that we're, if we could find a way to make sure it kind of almost jives with. But. But obviously the town would take the lead and we'll just copy.
Anything further from anyone? Seeing no further comments, we'll move on in the agenda. The next item up is adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cartula, second by, I believe it was Ms. George came in second. All who's in favor, say aye.
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 Full meeting closed.
Substances.